And the other person, the engineer who was helping us with this also has three younger children. So yeah, we have, this is a long-term vision. This would be, you know, not something that's kind of just like done and forgotten.
So are there any board members, particularly ones that didn't hear this presentation the first time in the Buildings and Grounds Committee? That have any questions for, for the Tatum crew or anything we, you wanted to bring up and to discuss? That's the whole point of the committee of the whole part, right? So we can, we can talk about it now.
I just had a quick question. I think you touched on this. I'm sure that's already been tied in. But has there been specific ideas or really any ideas? I know this is a ways down, but will this connect to curriculum, tying it into curriculum? Are there ideas of that nature? Cause it sounds amazing in and of itself, but are there ideas of that, that you're thinking about?
Yeah, I mean, I think Mary, for us, SEL has been such an institution before it kind of made its way into the mainstream, at least in my three years there. And so part of what the vision of this and the front, which Maggie and her team put together really almost over a weekend with the volunteers that she just mentioned, was to give kids all kinds of spaces to live and learn. And we wanted to honor the kids who are athletic during recess, but also kids who have other interests. And our teachers reported, we actually looked at the usage of the front learning space. Just the volume of use the front got kind of helped us facilitate this as quickly as we have. Because teachers reported wanting to learn outside. And so I can see it being tied into certainly music classes, I think would be amazing out there, out there as well as art, certainly science. And I think SEL sessions out there would be great. As Maggie mentioned, we do, we have this cute little contingent of kids, like just want to put on plays all the time instead of catching the football. And if they have such little space now, they'll get it. I do think design success helps. And I think Maggie, one thing we hadn't talked about here is, I don't, Mary, this doesn't directly answer your question, but you know, we'd be happy to sort of trailblaze this at other schools. You know, we like to be a model for other schools who are trying to do it in a more grassroots way, you know, the same way involved a really heavy grant. We're going to hopefully get some grants. We're kind of doing this ourselves. And so we'd be happy to kind of give that off. But as Maggie said, we want the kids learning outside as much as we can. Now we'll have multiple spaces once this is finished. I do think it connects to the curriculum and it'll just make our kids a little more in tune with the SEL that we're trying to, well, continue to make priority at Tatum.
Brian, you just helped to answer one of my questions, but I was less so for you guys, because it's not totally on you to, to, you know, help the rest of the schools kind of get to the same space, although it's wonderful that you would want to. And yeah, it's kind of the whole community point, but, but that's something that I feel like as a board, I'd like us to also make sure that we, we don't forget about, right? That we want to try to help the, the rest of the schools. And I know, I know they all have some version of this kind of in the works or they're trying to get there. And so, you know, whatever we can do, whether it's, you know, helping to connect people through the different PTAs or through, through other resources. I know Syria shared, I remember at the Buildings and Grounds meeting, she shared like three foundations.
Right away. Yeah. Yeah, it was great.
So whatever it is for us to kind of be mindful of that moving forward, that how can, you know, we help support the, the other schools in their efforts with this as well?
Just a shout out to Keith who came over to the building and met with us and really kind of walked us through what needs to happen. We also had a one, two, I guess there's four teacher representatives, one on the health and safety team. One is a classroom teacher who's outside all the time. And one is Mr. Pfeifer, who may not know, but was a PE teacher now is a great teacher who runs a really successful, I know it sounds silly, but football league at recess during his own time. So we wanted his input on how it was going to impact that. So we had a lot of heads in on it. And Maggie, I think you already started the work of talking to other PTAs, you know, should this go well? So yeah, I mean, we, in all ways, we would love to share, let's go on to Tatum with those schools.
At least our experience with the front, which I was also a part of, was that like, we were able to do, I think, the entire front for under a thousand dollars. Right? So most of what we're doing is very, I think, very replicable and does not like these, like we have the benefit of having a father who is a landscape designer by trade, but like it doesn't have to look this fancy, right? Like a lower scale version of this like works just fine. But yeah, I think most of what we're doing here, especially like having had partnerships that we've been able to establish with like local, like government and local businesses, I think has been really key to our success and sort of sharing that. And we have like all this running documentation. I'd be happy to, because you know, part of, and I, this is one of the things we talked about in the subcommittee, was that, you know, one of the things that I've learned through my own sort of profession is that, you know, giving kids unstructured spaces really elevates students who do not have the same kind of leadership tendencies, like they're the leaders on the playground when you're playing with a ball and it's highly structured, right? Then you have these other kiddos who like really thrive because you give them an unstructured space and they don't see unstructured space and therefore confusion. Like maybe my older son can sometimes do, right? But they see like, it's a pirate ship. And then all of a sudden they become the leaders because they have that kind of vision. So really kind of like, you know, there, there's like a sort of, to me, like an equity component amongst like kids and like letting them, giving them each spaces where they feel like they can really shine and thrive. And I don't necessarily feel like our sort of current blacktop area, you know, while it's great, they have outdoor space where they can go during the day. Like I think we can provide more for more children this way. So that was part of my goal. And I would love to see that happen across all the elementary schools personally.
Excuse me, can I ask just a couple of mundane questions?
Sure.
Are you still planning to put a wooden mulch up against the building?
Yeah, I know. We're looking into like what alternatives might, you know, be available for that. So we don't have a sort of set answer on that yet, but we are definitely like, we took that into consideration from our Buildings and Grounds feedback.
But there's still a possibility that you will put wood, wood mulch up against the building.
I mean, I think I would, yeah, I don't know. I can't, I wish I could say like yes or no. I don't have a firm answer. I don't know what the alternatives would be. I guess like I saw that Keith was on the call. I don't know if Keith has any ideas or suggestions for alternatives or if anybody else does. But no, I, I remember what you said. I don't want to, like, I think sand was absolutely like eliminated from the like realm of possibilities, just like from a parent perspective. Nobody wants their kids with like, you know, sand filled shoes at the end of the day. So if there's other alternatives, we would certainly be, you know, amenable to that. Or whether or not that's creating a barrier or what that would look like. But, you know, in talking with our landscape architect, who's like helping us design this, we communicated that concern to him.
Okay. I don't know whether there are other alternatives that exist, but putting a flammable material up against the building is a really bad idea on any circumstances. Couple more too. Do you have an estimate, your, your best estimate at this point of what the total cost of the project would be?
Yeah, I think our best estimate right now is around thirty five thousand dollars, which, you know, sounds like a lot, but I think is, you know, well within our like means, even if we sort of devoted most of our fundraising to that, that's about three years. And if that's what it takes us to do it, so be it. But I also like, we have some, you know, grant writers who are on our PTA who have offered to help. And at least preliminarily, one of the local banks is expressed interest in sort of supporting this project to some degree. And so we're in conversations with them about what that might look like. So whether or not like the amphitheater is theirs or something along those lines and what they want to sort of do. So we've tried to break it out to smaller things and smaller projects in terms of like sponsorship levels. So we're still working on that. I didn't want to push it too far before we got board approval and like getting people super enrolled in something that isn't going to happen. So it's a little bit of a dance right now that we're trying to be delicate with.
Okay. Now, the only other thing that, that I would ask, it would probably be helpful if there were dimensions on the, when the drawings had there. So we would have an idea of how big this is going to be and what's going to be left over and what, what everything is going to, where it's going to fit into all of this.
Roger, I don't remember if that was on the first one that you showed or not.
It was not.
Oh yeah, it is. There's like square footage down below. So that it's a scale at the bottom of that.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments that they'd like to make? Roger?
Yeah, I was gonna just first off, thank y'all for coming to, to present and also putting in all this work to conceive of like this idea. It sounds amazing. And to me, it's really encouraging hearing y'all talk about sharing the knowledge and the experience that you're going to gain while implementing that, you know, this amazing plan with the other PTAs and the other schools in, in the area and in the district. Cause I, I think that the knowledge that, that y'all are going to gain while doing this, it can really help jumpstart and just, just save time and, and, and reach all of the kids in Collingwood and, and not, you know, not just at, at Tatum. So I'd really, you know, highly encourage all the, to, to share your knowledge as you get it. And, you know, hopefully the, the, the board, we can help support you as, as you look to share your knowledge with the, the other schools. So thanks again for coming to, to present.
Yeah, sure. No, and absolutely. This was something that, you know, I feel like we were, it's kind of passing it on. I was able to meet with Val at Zane and go over this a couple of years ago. So just sort of like passing that on and passing it forward. And, you know, also like we obviously, you know, sort of made sort of adjustments to like Tatum and what Tatum's particular needs were. Like we have a very different setup than what is at Zane. Like we actually have a much smaller area we're working with. And we had to sort of, you know, be attuned to like, you know, what do we actually still need to Mr. Kulak's point to make sure that, you know, Mrs. Grolling, our amazing PE teacher was happy with what she still had available to her. And, you know, like, so it was a little, you know, and like, so being able to take that all into consideration. So I would imagine every other school will have those other sort of personal stamps, but I think there is a lot that can be replicated so that the groundwork is laid. So absolutely.
And I appreciate discussing the equity in the, in the buildings, because like not all kids are sports kids. And I think it's important to provide different spaces for, for different interests for children. I do have a concern just for, for the board that we continue to kind of have individual schools doing this. Because I do think that it helps perpetuate inequity inside of the district. And I, I appreciate sharing knowledge and information, but there's a lot more that goes into developing the playgrounds than just like the knowledge base. Like there's social capital and we have such disparity between residents inside of our schools that I, you know, the, the timeline difference even between Zane and Tatum, right, is like a couple of years. So that means that especially when we start talking about building in curriculum, we're talking about entire schools that will not experience that piece of the curriculum and other aspects of the value of these outdoor spaces. Because as a board, we don't have, we don't have a universal vision or solution that allows all of the children in the district to benefit for these types of spaces. And we don't have any policies as a board that dictates like what elements every school should have in it. Are we providing a certain percentage of shade area, ADA compliance? Like there's a ton of things that as a district, I think that we need to address to ensure that there is, we're not perpetuating inequities between buildings, relying on parents to, you know, sort of do all of this work. And then, like I said, also making sure that we have a foundation of policies for the schools to build off of so that they all have equal, semi-equal footing and, and experiences for the children.
So I have two thoughts I wanted to bring to that. So Clinton, I think you, you just gave yourself a whole bunch of stuff to add to your policy committee agenda, because I think you're right. I think the way that we can help to ensure that there, there's more, where, I guess, our, the vision is being articulated. I think probably all of us would agree, we'd love to see this, this type of thing at every single school. The problem is, the part of the problem is that we may not have articulated it that way and made sure that certain things can happen. And then part of it is that financially, we don't have money in the budget to do this at every school. As much as we would love to, that's just not a reality. And so how do we, how do, I guess a discussion for the board, not for Brian and Maggie, is, is what, what can we do about that? Because realistically, I mean, we were just having budget discussions that certainly don't have money in the budget to put this at every school on our own. So what can we do to, to address this issue? Cause, cause I agree with you that it's absolutely an issue. But what, what is really within our power to do about that beyond supporting the PTA efforts? Because there, it is happening at the other schools. I don't know about Sharp, but I do know that the other two elementary schools that don't have this have been planning for it, are trying to, to get something done. I'm sure Maggie probably knows more about that than I do, but, but how can we, I don't know, help to supplement that or?
It may be worth to consider discussions around collaborative grant applications for this full district versus just the schools.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
You know, and, and I mean, I look at things as even as, you know, holiday parades where Sharp didn't have a, a presence. They didn't have a vehicle and, and they couldn't go the one year, or they had challenges going the one year because they have different needs and they, they had different resources. So like one school shouldn't necessarily get left out of things, especially when we're starting to talk about, you know, curriculum. You know, that, that would be like my chief concern and I would like from, from a board, like I think we need to talk about a district-wide solution. Understanding that we might not necessarily have the budget, but we do develop, you know, some, some guideline and policies so that we can support, make sure that every kid in the district has the benefit of like an extraordinary space like this.
Chris, did I see that you were raising your hand or no?
No, I just wanted to make a point too, you know, I don't know the rules around it. And again, I think this is, comes back on the board, not necessarily, not people at Tatum, but approaching, you know, large donors. I'm not sure what the rules are on that, if it's going just to one school. I think that's something we have to talk about as well.
Why do I remember that we did have a discussion and actually we talked about a polit-
The computers at Zane.
Right.
There, there is.
Policy based on that, I feel like.
Yeah.
We do. We looked into it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. We checked this before we actually approached anybody. And there is a policy, but it basically just sort of says that like, like we weren't in, we weren't as a school in violation of what, at the policy as stated by going and seeking this. We just sort of couldn't do it as sort of like representatives of like the board. So there was not actually anything that in that policy that says an individual school can't seek corporate sponsorships or sponsorships. So we made sure we were sort of like, you know, drawing inside the lines on that one.
Right.
But yeah, there definitely is a policy.
Yeah. And I thought, I thought that perhaps we did not vote on the, the proposed policy that I remember us talking about that said kind of over a certain amount of money.
Right.
That it was something that the, the board would need to be made aware of so that one school can't say, sure, I'll take, you know, thirty grand worth of computers for just my one school, whether my school is the one that needs it the most or not, kind of thing was where it, I remember it originated from. So that's, Clinton, I hope you're keeping the list because please add that as well. That is something we need to look into, because if that's not.
That was, that was it. That was it. It was more, that was, that was the flavor of that.
But it sounds like from what Maggie's saying, that's not what is in the policy currently.
Yes.
Well, I think what's in the policy had to do with donations.
Yes.
Grant is different from a donation.
Thank you.
I mean.
Maybe you're right about that. I don't know. We'll have to.
We're talking about different, maybe we're talking about different things. Maybe we're, we're thinking of a different policy than what you're talking about. But maybe we're talking about donate, the donation policy than what the, the policy.
That's very possible. Yeah.
Which is completely a hundred percent possible, because we're, we could be having different conversations. But I do think our whole conversation here is one, I think the policy, the grant writing, the need to make sure that this is equitably replicated across the district. These are all conversations that are vital and important. And I think the board has to have them at our, I don't want to call it a retreat at our next work session, because I think it's important. I think we also have to acknowledge kind of where these plans are at right now. And I don't know that one has to necessarily counter the other. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Mary, that I think it's, it's a, it's both things. It's, you know, these plans are, are in the works and they're, you know, they, it's been very thoughtful and a lot of work has gone into it. And at the same time, we have a lot of other work that we need to do. And I saw Dr. McDowell making a lot of notes too, and I'm sure that will be part of our, our next work session for sure. Cause it kind of all ties into the work that he's doing right now with the, the creating kind of the, the, his transition plan as well. And what, what next steps will look like with that and that, you know, all of these questions and things tying with it.
To, to Clinton's point, I think that when we think about social capital advocacy, the first thing that comes to mind is, is, is something similar to what Syria said about grant writing, technical assistance and building of the capital needed for all school PTAs. If that's the mechanism that we believe could be, you know, a form of outreach to have the skillsets, the tools and the resources needed to engage external stakeholders. But in addition to that, partnership with the board office in the district and each individual PTA in order to help each school be able to clearly articulate and then go out and, and actually identify the resources to be able to bring back. So that we're not creating a, a, a system of has and have not, but we're also not punishing PTAs or organizations that just happen to be further developed in their process than others. But I think that it's incumbent upon the district to ramp up the expertise and the capital at each and every school so that they can pursue whatever projects they believe are going to be most supportive for their student population. So I can, I, I completely agree. And, and I, I do believe that in our retreat, I think that we can begin to nail down and solidify the policies. And more importantly, begin discussing what does that look like in practice? And then for us to actually begin implementing and supporting the schools in a deeper way.
Did any, I'm just looking at the time and everything. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to add? Any other questions for our lovely presenters before we?
I have hopefully, hopefully a quick one just around timeline. And thank you for, for sitting through and listening through all, all the questions. I guess it's two, two of them, one around collaboration and just wondering what conversations happened with other PTAs, either with Zane or with other schools already that, that may already be happening that we're not aware of, particularly around and just the development of this plan. But then also as you, you look to get things going. And then the other one is maybe a little bit selfish, but my, my sons loved the summer program that happened at Tatum in the normal summers. I don't know what impact this would have on that. I mean, obviously down the road, kids being able to take advantage of this during the summers would be great, but I didn't know if time, I know timelines are still probably being figured out and everything.
Yeah. So, and I should just also clarify, one of the policies I was looking, I was also about advertising. So I might be conflating the two policies that I was looking at. So my apologies though. But if there is something, we're of course, like, I'm in agreement with everything that everybody's saying about the need to sort of make sure this is done in a way that is responsible. So Matt, to your question about collaboration, we did work a lot with Zane and sort of trying to figure out like, okay, what did you do and how did you do it? Their was a larger scale than really what we're proposing. So we sort of scaled it down to something that we felt like we could kind of like, you know, bite off ourselves. And so a lot of the materials that Zane had, like they shared with us, and we sort of like used that as a jumping off point actually for like the front sort of space that we created over the path and that we were able to achieve that whole like sort of redo of the front of Tatum, which included the sort of the amphitheater, the stump amphitheater where a lot of kids will go out and have class. One of the math instructors wanted like big, huge stumps so that kids could use them as a table. So we got big, huge stumps, which kids use as like a sort of a joint session where they can all sort of sit around, as well as the dragonfly bench with, which children love to go and play on and sit on. And that's also sort of another area. So we were able to do that start to finish. I think we broke around in October and it was installed by, most of it was installed by about May. The sort of big stumps were literally on like the last day of school. So we got it all done in one year. And so the collaboration, we talked a little bit at that point in time with some of the other PTAs, like they, I was like, anybody interested? And nobody like really bit on it. I know that some other schools were working on it. I haven't circled back around yet on this piece of it, but we do have a like PTA from all the schools. So all the PTA presidents and some of the other executive staff are all on this. And so anytime we have a question or like, you know, an issue or wondering what somebody else is doing for like whatever, like event, we have been sort of in touch with that. So I think that's a really, you know, a great way to sort of maybe sort of tap into that network and kind of share these ideas. And also like, you know, exchange ideas about what other people, right? And to your point that, you know, the fact that other schools are doing something, you know, maybe similar, but with their own flavor on it. I think that that would absolutely be something that we could sort of do and start the conversation. And Clinton, like I absolutely, that was one of the things that we've really been trying to do. I think as PTAs over the past couple of years, especially with this group of like leaders that's involved, is really make sure that nobody gets left out. And so for instance, like last year, when we still had, last school year, I should say, when there was the holiday parade, like we sort of reached out to everybody. Said like, hey, we have a float. Anybody want to join us? Like, we don't want anybody to be left out. And actually like one school did, right? So I think that there is increasingly maybe that sort of like, like partnership that's going on between schools and pooling of resources. So I think this would be a really natural outgrowth, you know, for that to continue to happen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I'm sorry, Clint, I just want to make sure Matt's second question can answer it. I, I don't see that being prohibitive, you know, we're going to start if we can with phase one along the wall around spring break. Been working with Keith, I, I actually thought this is much more massive, groundbreaking process than it really is. But that's just my naivety in terms of this whole project. But I don't see the summer program being affected. And even if it were, it would not be the entire playground. It would still be plenty for kids to do there. Because I think it's been at Tatum for, for a long time. As far as I know, I don't know if they rotate, if it rotates schools. Parents probably know better than I know. It's okay. Obviously it's only been one year for me there because we didn't have it last year, but I don't, I don't think it would be impacting too much.
Matt. Thank you both.
Yeah, sorry, Clint, go ahead.
Oh, and just like quickly, I think the summer program does not go the whole summer, if I'm remembering, right?
No, 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 no summer program does.
Right. So I mean, like that would be easy enough for us to work around. Like that to me is not a concern. Like if we pause for like July, which is like my memory from when my kids did it was like mostly July and maybe like a little bit on like shoulders. Like I think that's fine and that's something we can work around. Clinton, did you have a question?
No, I mean, I just want to say like, I don't want, I mean, to come off as like, I'm not like appreciative of the work and I think it's all fantastic. My concern is that like, there's not always going to be a Maggie at every single building, right? In the district that is going to have the, not just like the desire, but like the skillset to organize everything and get everybody fired up about it. And I just want to make sure that in the absence of having a Maggie in every building, that the district is filling in those, those, those gaps. You know, and that we do have some policy that guides all of this. Like you, you mentioned sponsorship earlier and like, I know a number of years ago, we had conversation about allowing sponsorship. And like people have, like businesses have offered, I guess, the district in the past about labeling things and revenue sources. And I think at that time, it was actually during a retreat, I jokingly said how like Pepsi painted Pepsi on the top of a school because they were in a flight path. And, you know, we discussed that as a board is like, we don't want that, right? Like we don't want corporate sponsorship in our school spaces. So I just wanted, as a board, that we are creating a structure that permits for the equity and that work to continue in the absence of a Maggie everywhere, that the, the, the board and the district is supporting that everybody gets these valuable resources.
Fiona, are you intentionally raising your hand there?
I am. So, so I, I echo Clinton's thoughts when he initially brought up the equity issue. That was my thought exactly, that this is a, a wonderful project and I certainly would be in favor of it and am in favor of it. But I think also through the years as a district, we've been talking about the need for, you know, on staff or volunteer grant writers in the district. The idea of collaborative PTAs has come together. We talked about trying to start an ed foundation and of course we have the work that our equity committee has done. And I think all of that is related. And I think of all places to make this happen, Collingwood is the place where that can happen. Because I do think we have a community of people who would come together and volunteer their suggestions and expertise and collaborate to, to work towards this equity issue. So I, I would be completely in favor of this. And I think we, we've heard a lot that, you know, we could, we could as a board organize it and engage our community members to try and work on these inequities and find ways to make them happen.
I just want to jump in with a small, another question, but you know, I, I echo Fiona and Clinton's points, points that, that we as, as a board and as a district do need to do the work to, to make sure that there's consistency in, in what we're doing year to year even, right? With like, I think, I think Maggie and Brian talked about how depending on who's coming up next, right? And then in the younger grades, the, the engagement of the PTA might ebb and flow. And so even helping ensure that year-to-year consistency is important. I, I think this is a pretty simple question. I, I think this is a pretty simple question. I think it might be for Mr. Higginbotham, but is there any like indication about, will there need to be additional support from, from the district or the board in terms of upkeep? You know, year to year now with, with this type of a setup instead of a blacktop all the way through?
No, the area that they are, we would be concerned about upkeep would be is eventually if we do get a rain garden, typically once a year, we need to go in there and kind of do some weeding and some pruning back. But most of the area over here is going to be interactive, like for instance, the stumps and with the fall zone material around them and the slow growing trees to provide some shade. So there's not really any area that would need a whole lot of maintenance.
Okay, so that's something that like we have to plan out as a board to like maybe add additional funding or support to maintain year to year.
No, typically if we're talking fall zone material, the cost would be negligible. We typically get, you know, a tractor trailer load of timber turf, which is an engineered fill material that's ADA compliant for fall zone areas around the playground. And we could put that in those same areas because it would be serving the same purpose.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Fiona, did you have?
I did, I'm really sorry. I'll make it quick. And back to what Bill had mentioned about the material that was going to be up against the building. My assumption in this is that, and my assumption is that all this would be done in conjunction with the buildings and grounds, like buildings and grounds would be taking the lead on this. And yeah, right, so you'd be working together. It wouldn't just be that you guys would dump some mulch without their sort of.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's why Keith's been so helpful. In fact, the, this, I guess it's a synthetic, if that's the right word, material he just talked about for the falls knows would probably work similarly there where the trees go. But no, we, you know, we didn't do, I don't remember, Maggie, do we have much B and G backing when we did the front? I think we did most of ourselves. Al did dump a bunch of stuff actually for us, didn't he, near the end there?
He gave us, yeah, he gave us some of the mulch, he gave us sand and we consulted.
That's right.
I'm not so much, I'm sorry, I'm not so much talking about the workload, but I'm talking about kind of approval and recommendations and.
Oh, yeah.
Through beyond, beyond this initial stage, like kind of all the way through, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I will say it's been so helpful and instrumental because like he's really been there from the beginning because we didn't want to like think of something that was just never going to be reasonable, you know, from the district standpoint. So he's been a really like wonderful asset and great to work with and helpful in sort of thinking through what, you know, is possible and not possible and reasonable and not reasonable. So like all of this was actually done with his input from the very beginning.
Keith, can I ask you a question on, on the artificial material you were talking about? Is that flammable?
Well, anything that you can, if you dump an accelerator on it and you have enough time and ambition, you could set it on fire, but typically it's not a synthetic material. I would be against actually putting a synthetic material because they'll burn like a smudge pot. And typically the problem you have with flammable mulch is if you get into a chip style mulch, like the cheap pine bark chips. So typically the material that they put down for the playground is a root mulch, like a licorice root and it's triple ground. And the product that we use around the playgrounds now is called timber turf. And it is a plant-based, wood-based material, but it is specifically designed, so it meets ADA requirement. So if that we have a child that's in a wheelchair or a motorized scooter, they can go across it and it won't compact. It will, it will compact enough to allow surface travel over it, but won't compact enough so that it compresses and doesn't become a decent fall zone material, especially in areas where you're around where you have climbers and swings and those sort of objects.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea in the playgrounds. I have no problem with that. But I'm, I'm still concerned about putting a flammable material up against the building. I, I think that's a really bad idea. There's got to be some, even if you left asphalt up against the building, it's got to be preferable to putting a flammable material up against the building.
Even something like a decorative stone, which is a fall zone material that is allowed to be utilized in flagrant spaces is.
I, I wouldn't recommend stones because stones get picked up and thrown, if not at other children at windows and then we have that whole ordeal. I could consult with, we just had our, our yearly fire inspection with the fire marshal and we have a couple of areas that we have to remedy a couple of exit signs and that sort of things that need to get replaced. So when they come back out to do a reinspection, I can bring it to his attention and see if there's something that he would recommend or if he has a concern with the type of material we use and go from there just to get some additional input.
Great idea.
Very good.
Thank you, Keith.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you both to Brian and Maggie for answering all of our questions and for caring so much about the kids that you put this entire presentation together because it looks fantastic. So thank you very much for all of that and for bearing with us through all of it. The, the last thing that we're going to do in committee of the whole before we move out for Mr. Yamamoto's presentation is, Matt, I'm going to ask you to help me out with this. At Buildings and Grounds, we had a discussion about creating an ad hoc committee to discuss kind of what our plan is for long-term facilities planning. Would that be an accurate representation of what this committee would be format?
Yes, yeah, basically taking a look at what are the facilities across the district that we really need to start thinking about, both in the immediate, but then also long-term and thinking about the financial solutions, what, how's the budget need to be reflected over the next few years to ensure that we're able to get those things done? So we were hoping to create an ad hoc committee to, to be able to accelerate some of that work.
So we were thinking of opening it up to more than simply the, the Buildings and Grounds Committee itself in case there were people who felt they had certain very strong opinions about that or expertise in facilities planning or budgeting that they wanted to get in on that conversation. So what I'm going to do to simplify this process or shorten it for now is if you are someone on the board who is interested in serving on the ad hoc, long-range facilities planning committee, please send Matt and I an email and we will, we will figure out who those five people will be based on the interests that we, we hear from. Does that sound good for everybody?
Is that five including Bethan?
Yeah, because she's not a board member. It's just, it's got to be less than a core of board members.
Yeah, so for board, board members, it's just five and then it'd be Keith and myself and the superintendent and whoever else.
Right, but in terms of it's just five board members that can.
Correct, yeah.
All right, so if you have interested in serving on that committee, please send us an email and we will, we will get that sorted out. If there are not any other questions or topics that someone would like to bring up for committee of the whole, speak now or forever hold your peace, then I am going to look, to look for a motion to leave committee of the whole this evening. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So now we are moving on to section four. We've already had the Tatum outdoor presentation. So Mr. Yamamoto is going to present the Student Safety Data System Report for period one.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I'm presenting the Student Safety Data Systems Report or SSDS. Basically twice a year, districts have to send the state list of all serious discipline issues, the number of like district suspensions, HIV investigations, training, some programs. So this information really deals with the first report period that goes from September 1st through December 31st of 2020. So with our current situation and our hybrid remote instructional platform, basically we had zero, I mean, I guess please report, we had zero HIV investigations in the first four months of school. And we reported also 11 HIV trainings and 44 HIV programs to the state. So most of our trainings are designed to improve HIV awareness and the understanding of equity. Our programs really focused on improving school climate and student relationships. And obviously we also supported the social emotional wellbeing of our students. In terms of discipline, we report those cases that reach the SSDS level. So basically what that means is that if we have instance involved violence, vandalism, substance offense, weapons offense or any of, any HIV investigations, that information has to go to the state. Let me see, so, but, but for this report period, we had zero SSDS incidents report. We did have to send two incidents that led to student removal. And that's my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Just real quick, because student removal means suspension, not permanent removal.
Yes, suspension.
Just, just clarifying there.
Real quick, suspension, so they were hybrid students and suspension from that? Is that what you're saying? Or you can't say, if you can't say, it's fine. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, these were, well, hybrid.
If you can, if you can.
Yeah, it was probably hybrid students because if they're at home, there wasn't really.
Right, I just was trying to understand, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Um, can I ask a question about those removals? To follow up, what, what does removal or suspension mean? Like currently, is that like you're, you're not even allowed to participate in school virtually?
No, we would never take away the education. They would just have to be remote.
Okay, okay, so, so it was, so then I guess my, my question is, you know, that there were no instance report on the SSDS. But then there were, there was some instant to level that required.
Students not being able to come to school.
School.
Right, basically they dealt with inappropriate social media use. Can I answer any other questions?
I, I do have, I don't know if it's a question or, or just curiosity, but this situation with the pandemic and remote learning has obviously shifted how we do a lot of things and that includes what suspension looks like. So you just said, you know, we wouldn't take away education from the students, so they, they have access to remote learning, but in regular circumstances, a student that's suspended would not have access to learning. So kind of wondering if that's one thing we should look at permanently changing moving forward, since we know we have the means and the capacity to do that. Don't know what that would look like, but again, just pointing out that in the past, before pandemic, before COVID, suspension meant no education while suspended.
Yes, and I mean, obviously what's going on is very trying for everybody, but there are some lessons that I believe we are learning and, and I believe that we will kind of take advantage of what we've learned and really improve our education or instruction as we move forward and hopefully as we can go back to normal. And that's a good point which you just mentioned.
Well, I, I am correct, right, that we do provide instruction. It would just be disciplinary home instruction.
For like before or currently?
Before.
So if it was like, like two or three days, home instruction requires a longer amount of time to actually be able to give it to a student. And that's not to say that if a student is being suspended, that work could have been sent. I mean, especially because we've been using Google Classroom even prior to the pandemic. So a lot of work has been placed on there. I mean, we've been doing that practice since it's been available. So students could still do work or keep up with assignments even if they were suspended.
Thank you.
Do we have a district policy when, in the before times that all teachers had to provide lesson plans, lessons to the students? Or is it ad hoc?
I, I, I'd have to look to see if that was actually in board policy that we'd have to provide. I would imagine, I, I believe that we just, as the teachers cared for the kids, that they would just have it available. And like I said, some, if the teachers use Google Classroom or one of those platforms, they would have it posted regardless.
If the teacher used those, right?
If the, but most of our teachers either used.
One or the other.
Classroom or the other, which I don't remember what that one was now at this time, but yeah.
Okay, just thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Yamamoto? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And moving on to section five, our future dates and miscellaneous. Elementary school parents, please note that March 22nd of the 26th will be elementary conference week. And also this isn't on the agenda, but just wanted to, to mention that there were, that Dr. McDowell and myself will be participating in a town forum tomorrow night at seven o'clock. So everyone can ask more questions of, of Dr. McDowell and get to know him a bit better. The town is hosting that for us, so just wanted to put that on everyone's calendar as well. Moving on to section six, routine board business. We are looking for approval of the minutes of the January 25th, 2021 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we are up to our first public comment section. The way we do this in Zoom time is that you still can keep your comments to five minutes or less and the purpose of this particular comment section is for, to speak to items that are currently on the agenda. Additional more general comments can be made later in the meeting and that the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. If there is a member of the public that would like to make a comment at this time, please put your name in the chat and we will call on you and give you the, the ability to unmute yourself or we will unmute you. I'm not 100% sure on, but either way, if you would like to make a comment, please put your name in the chat so that we know there's someone out there that would like to speak. Can I give it 20 more seconds? I'm not seeing anything.
Hello?
Matt Dwyer? Go ahead. Is Matt Dwyer able to be unmuted?
I am, yes. I just wanted to put my face up so you could see me.
Hello.
They weren't, you weren't just talking to a blank screen.
Appreciate that.
Are, are all questions available or is it just, you, you are reading your statement, just things on the agenda? I mean, are, are school-related items, even though they weren't on the agenda?
So if it's an item that's more of a general question that's not on this specific agenda, the, the public comment section at the very end of our meeting is where you would ask that question, if that makes sense.
10-4, I'll, I'll wait till then.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else have a comment specifically about something that's on our agenda tonight?
Yes, this is John Dewire. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I was wondering on the superintendent's report, which is on the agenda, the enrollment section?
Yes.
It looks like we've got 0.94% attendance in the high school and the middle school and the elementary school. Is that correct? If you reach up the report that's on the superintendent's.
Right.
Review, the first item is, oh, I, I dropped it from my screen, but report on enrollment attendance. Yeah, there it is. See those percentages? Point nine four, point nine four, point nine eight, point nine eight, point nine four. Is that true? Is that one, less than 1% attendance?
Are they 94, is it supposed to read 94%?
Oh, well, I'll tell you what, I, I'll tell you what. I went past the school today at, as, as the students were leaving, taking my granddaughter to her preschool and I counted like about 10 people, 10 students. And this has got to stop. Or at least you've got to spend as much time on this as the Tatum landscaping job. You spent, spent a full 45 minutes on that. Okay, in 10 minutes on SSDS, which I don't appreciate, but maybe that's the way you do things. But I want to know, is that percentage correct?
So, Mr., Mr. Dwyer, thank you for your question, if you look at the, uh, the top area. So for example, if you highlight the senior high, it shows the total enrollment is seven-hundred-and-thirty-five students.
Right.
Well, the average attendance for the senior high is six-hundred-and-ninety-two students. So my, uh, what I am gleaning would, that would be, uh, ninety-four percent, not, uh, less than one percent in terms of students participating.
Hold on. Oh, you're counting, what, people that click on the website?
Sir?
Are you counting the, uh, the virtual attendance?
Yes, sir, that's included in this report as well, yes, sir.
Is that for all the days? Or just for January?
That's for January, sir.
Okay. So how many kids did you have in class in January? That's my problem, you're hurting all those kids that are not in class.
You mean physically in-person versus remote?
Yeah, mentally. In-person. You're damaging their education. And you've been doing it for a year, almost a year, excuse me.
Right, well, I, I think that it's, it's important to focus on the fact that the students are engaged. The students, if we want to, if we focus on just the high school. So the students that are participating, this is active daily participation, and active daily engagement with their teachers. Um, and students are submitting work on a regular basis, students are receiving grades, and students are receiving high school credits towards graduation. So this particular environment is not opportune in terms of a remote environment. However, when we look at the choices that families made, a large percentage of our high school population. Families chose to, to be in a remote environment opposed to in-person, because they had significant concerns as they related to the pandemic. So I, I completely agree with you, this is not opportune, this is not what we would want, but this is the situation that we're currently working through right now.
It's totally destructive, and I'm not blaming you, doctor, I'm not blaming you at all, because you just got here, okay? You just stepped on board the Collingswood School Board, but I'm blaming most of the school board members. That they absolutely have not done anything about getting the kids in classroom. Now, if the next month's meeting, then I'll blame you. But, you know, I don't blame you for, uh, being here a couple of weeks and, uh, and you just realized and looking around. And I realize you got it like a ninety-day plan, and I read it, and it's great, and everything's great about it, but you forgot to mention. In-class attendance. It's destructive. Totally, absolutely destructive to these kids, and you know who gets the worst of this? Sharp, which is right down the street from me, there's kids there that probably, you know, especially the younger kids, okay?
Mr. Dwyer, I'm going to stop you right there, it's been five minutes, and we do very much appreciate your comments. And we are very much taking this issue seriously, and Dr. McDowell has, has sent out a plan for how we will, um. Be bringing, be making plans to bring more students back to school when it is, it is safe. And, uh, we do thank you very much for, for your comments. Uh, but we do need to move on, uh, if there is anyone else that would like, uh, to speak, I don't see anyone else in the chat at this time. But if there is, this would be the time. Alright, seeing no other comments, we are going to move on to section eight, which is the superintendent's report, uh, Dr. McDowell.
Okay. Um, to, uh. Mr. Dewire's original, uh, reference to the enrollment report, so January twenty-twenty, we were at twenty-two thirty-seven. Uh, and then the official roll effective January twenty-twenty-one was twenty-two fifteen, so we have seen a slight, uh, decline, which. Uh, we are hoping will reconcile itself as we shift, uh, collectively as a district can move back towards more, uh, in-person instruction. Um, I think it's important to note, um, that there are very real concerns, uh, throughout our community as it relates with school reopening. We are taking this extremely seriously, uh, but at the same time, we unfortunately are at the behest of the pandemic. And adherence to stringent recommendations and guidance coming from both federal, state, and local departments of public health, so. You know, I, I can't state enough that we do believe the best place for children to be is in school. However, uh, we also are very cognizant of the fact that we have to make sure that we are doing it in a responsible and in a safe manner. Uh, and more specifically, that we are taking into consideration the desires and wishes of our families, many of whom have expressed. Uh, and unease and in high levels of anxiety as it relates with in-person instruction in the middle of this pandemic. So in the coming weeks, and that work has already begun, we as a school community will be engaging in significant discussion. And feedback loops as it relates with, uh, developing a transition plan that moves us back to, uh, a higher distribution of in-person instruction. But it's going to take some time, and it's also going to take, uh, a much larger body than the Board of Education, than the Board Office. Then just our school leaders, in order for us to get this right, uh, we're going to have to engage our community differently. Um, as we make some of these tough decisions, uh, and sacrifices in order to, uh, shift the way in which we've been teaching our students for the last year. In terms of the, um. Uh, school safety drill, uh, which is attached, the emergency drills are, um, still taking place at all schools. Uh, dependent on whether it's a gold day or a blue day, uh, determines, uh, the, the drills. Uh, but we are trying to make sure that we distribute our drills so that, uh, each cohort of students and staff, uh, are having the opportunities to practice, and that is attached. Um, we do not have a formal suspension report for this month, or an anti-bullying report for this month, and we have no new policies up for first read.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell, uh, moving on to section nine, our, uh, student reports, do we, um. Do Ayana Nicolet or Asia have, um, some good news to tell us? Are they able to unmute themselves, or, or do one of us need to?
I don't see them on the meeting.
They were on the call earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking now, I don't see them.
Alright, we will, we will hear from our high school, um, student board members, uh, next month, I'm guessing that they. We ran a little bit longer, and they may have needed to go.
Yeah, they probably had a lot of homework.
Yeah. Uh, so moving on to section ten, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report, Ms. Coleman.
Okay, uh, this evening, uh, just a quick budget update, obviously, uh, the budget work is ongoing, I just alert everyone, uh, tomorrow afternoon. Uh, the governor will do his budget address, at which point, um. Forty-eight hours after he concludes his, his speech, we will get our notification, um, of state aid, so I will know by four o'clock on Thursday afternoon. What the status of our state aid is, whether, uh, we're being held flat, whether we got more, or we are being reduced. So I will send an email out, uh, to the board members, um, Thursday, um, once I, once I get that information. Um, and then presented tonight, um, requiring your approval, are the January monthly transfers, the January secretary treasures reports, cash reports. The, uh, January student activities report, the January food service report, and then, um, the February purchase orders. And the warrants for the, uh, month of February to be paid tomorrow morning, so items eleven-point-oh-one through, uh. Eleven-point-oh-nine. Are the items I need approval on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, so Mr. Craig, uh, for the Buildings, uh, Grounds and Finance Committee.
Thank you, um, Building Finance and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers, and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. This is what we're asking to vote on, um, as, when Ms. Coleman just stated, from eleven-oh-two down to eleven-oh-five. The approval of transfers, certifications, um. Board certi- Board Secretary certifications, board certifications, and the Secretary and Treasurer reports. He also asking for eleven-oh-six for a recommendation, uh, superintendent to approve the January twenty-twenty-one student activities report is listed above. Um, and then the food financial services statement is listed above as well. Also, got through most of purchase orders, uh, listed in ten-oh-five, and also the warrants listed in ten-oh-six. Eleven-ten is to move on the recommendation, the superintendent to set the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Collingswood tuition rates as follows. Do I need to read through all the tuition rates, okay, alright, thank you for sparing me the fortune of messing those numbers up. Eleven-eleven is request for proposals, move in the recommendation superintendent to, um, initiate competitive contracting, and seek request proposals for Board of Education, Architect, Auditor. Medical Services, Nursing Services, Physical Therapy Services, Solicitor, and Transportation Nurse. Eleven-twelve is the Tatum PTA Outdoor Project, uh, move to approve the fundraising efforts for that project that we heard about earlier today in community of the whole. Uh, eleven-thirteen is a rec- is recommendation superintendent to approve Laurel Therapy, provide occupational therapy services at need basis. Fee of eighty dollars per hour. Eleven-fourteen, we have some textbooks that Newby Library that were going to be disposed of, um, these are rather old and disrepair. I think my favorite was Modern Medical Discoveries from nineteen forty-eight, so, um, we're moving for some of those to, to be disposed and approve of that. Since they were purchased with tax or with board funding, so. Also, moving recommendation dispose of two twenty-five-year-old snowblowers, and eleven-fifteen allow two employees to purchase these units for their scrap value of seventy-five dollars each. Eleven-sixteen, move in the recommendation superintendent approve proposal from Archway Programs, Just Kids Program for an eight-week summer program at Newby. Uh, from June twenty-first to August thirteenth, uh, no cost to the district for this program, the length of the program will depend on parent interest subscriptions, a fee of six-hundred-and-fifty dollars we pay to Collingswood School District for use of the facilities. I think they're usually over at Newby, um, each year. Eleven-seventeen, we have a donation, um, to approve from Mr. Ted Sikorski of a clarinet for the Elementary Music Department. Thank you for the donation, um, and then I, eleven-eighteen is discussion items, um. For Mr. Higginbotham to read through all those yet, or we just vote on?
No, you can skip the discussion items and just go right to the approval.
Okay, so we'll go twenty-two, just roll call to approve all items, uh, listed above.
Uh, do I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Are there any, uh, comments or questions from board members?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Um, the items that are on this grouping that relate to your elementary school, should I abstain from those?
Yes, you see, yes, and I'm sorry, they're not as, they don't have an asterisk, but, um, you can abstain from eleven-point-one-two, Heidi?
Mm-hmm.
Um, hold on.
Eleven-sixteen, probably?
Yeah, and eleven-sixteen, I think those are the only ones.
Okay, and then how mu- how much is the tuition increase for the high school?
Two percent.
Two percent?
Mm-huh.
The, to jump in, I think eleven-point-one-seven, it's for the elementary music department as well.
Right.
Yeah, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen are elementary items.
Thank you, Mr. Stotts.
Alright, so twelve, fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And then the increase of the tuition for the high school is two percent? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Ray, can I have a question, um, and I think it's partly because I couldn't make the committee meetings last week. Now that we're not reviewing these in committee of the whole, I think I've lost the thread of where I'm seeing the things on the committee that I'm not on, just from the reading?
Right.
Okay.
Guys, I have a quick question about the Archway program. Is that, um, most, it's all, it's an outdoor program, usually strictly, or indoor and outdoor?
Yeah, it's a combination, it's, um, we started that, oh, I want to say maybe ten years ago or more, the community wanted, I guess, a summer program. It's held at Newby, because I believe they have the ability from Newby Elementary to walk down to, um, the pool.
And will they be, I guess, depend, eh, I guess all of us, we depended on where we are in terms of. The amount of space we need in between kids and all, okay, that will be taken into consideration.
Yes, yeah, and you'd normally, we approve them, and then probably in the next couple of months, they will probably, um, they'll come out with their pamphlet and their brochure. To go to the parents, because the parents pay for this service, and then their information, we usually put, um, on our website as well.
But are they responsible, or like for saying how many are we responsible for saying?
They are, and they actually fall under different guidelines, they fall under like, almost like a childcare.
Got it.
They're slightly different than a school district, um, but yeah, no, they, they set all their own guidelines, they'll tell us, though, how many kids they can have in each facility, and they usually. Once they're, once they're full up, they're full up.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Oh, can I ask a follow-up question about this Archway program?
Sure.
The, the, uh, is this, is this open to, like, who's this open to, is it like all families in Collingswood?
Yes.
Okay, and then the, the six, the six fifty that's paid for the school district, uh, where does that money go?
It goes into miscellaneous revenue, it's like, basically like, like a use of facility fee, because the parents pay directly, but they are using our facility. So they're using our restrooms and so forth and so on, similar, if somebody wanted to come in and have a basketball clinic and use our facility, we cha- we would charge them a similar fee.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's, uh, been talk of this before, but, but in past years, ha- has there been any discussion of, um. Like, of, of, of funding for, for families that may want to participate, but, but, uh, maybe can't, uh, financially participate in the program?
That would have to go through Archway, but I do believe they take the, um, the vouchers. I believe they, I believe they do take those vouchers.
Um, families.
Yeah, Archway definitely takes childcare subsidy vouchers, and they advertise it pretty heavily, they, they really try to apply for it.
Okay.
Roger.
License dictate everything. Uh, they'll probably send an update out soon.
But just to clarify, we're just, we're not, the district isn't running this program, we're just approving the, the, the use of the facility.
Right, right.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except items eleven-point-one-two, one-four, one-six, and one-seven where I abstain.
Mrs. Wood?
Same as Mr. Stotts, thank you.
I gotcha, thank you. And Mrs. Kaden?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this month, the curriculum committee, normally, Ms. Severino would, uh, present, um, to us, but there's nothing on the agenda for approval this month. So, um, that is not to say that, that curriculum is not being thought about and talked about and implemented, it is just there's nothing, uh, on our agenda for us to, to specifically vote on. So moving on to, uh, section thirteen, the, the Personnel Committee, Ms. Sheridan Celia, can you present for us, please?
Uh, good evening, uh, the Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment. And considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. On the agenda for approval this evening, um, thirteen-oh-two, we have a staff resignation, thirteen-oh-three is FMLA leave. Thirteen-oh-four to thirteen-point-zero-seven are various, um, long-term substitute or interim teacher. 13:04 to 13.07 are various long-term substitute or interim teacher appointments. 13.8 is an extended transfer for Mr. Newman. 13:09 is approval of the after-school mental health support staff, which will help with our, the facility's use when people come in in the evening for the appointments that we've had that have been going on this year. We need staff to be there to greet the families. 13.10 is District Equity Council. 13.11 is Title I supplemental programs staffing. 1312 is a group of 10 PhD students from Rowan, approval for their internship. 13.13 are various substitute and tutors for this year. While no one is really traveling, at 13.14, there's a travel expense form for some school psychologists training that is under, is being undertaken. And I am moving for approval of items 13.01 through 13.14 at this time.
Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Oh, I do have a question about the student interns piece, 13.12. The research that they're conducting, like, is there more information about what the researchers, they are conducting and then how they're going to share the the results of their, the findings of their research with the district and the community?
Yes, I can, each, each student is doing a different project. I can send the board a list of the projects that each student is actually going to be doing and the types of data that they're going to be collecting.
And then I know we had asked this before, I remember that Dr. Oswald, who obviously had set this up, that those, once they've completed their research, that they would share their data with us and also present to us any, anything of interest or findings that they had.
Yes.
And also the follow-up here, you know, they're, they're working with a university program, but just to be sure, is it possible to get their IRB, like, their IRB Research Ethics approvals from, from the university prior to their starting their work?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Clinton, or Mr. Clinton, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clinton Connor, Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those I must mark with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes, except for the items marked with asterisks where I abstain.
And Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. And moving on to section 14 this evening, policy and miscellaneous. Dr. McDowell, could you take us through that one?
Yes. So 14.01, we are pleased to recommend that the Collingswood Educational Association Bargaining Agreement has been negotiated and ratified by its membership to take into effect for 2021 through 2024. 14.02, or job descriptions that have been revised. We are making some adjustments within our Technology Services Department precipitated by the departure of our league technician, who will be with us until the middle of March. So with the transition of our league technician, our business administrator worked collectively to, with the team in order to revise so that there would be a continuity of services and support leveraged by existing technicians expertise. And then these positions reflect some of the areas that we need to fill. 14.04 is a, I'm sorry, 14.03 is a resolution that the board is using to state its support for first-line workers, specifically our educators in terms of vaccine allotments, and will be sent to the governor's office. This is paired with a letter that was circulated and sent from all of the Camden County School Districts on behalf of the superintendents that was sent last week to the governor's office advocating that educators be prioritized in terms of vaccine as, and considered essential workers. This is the pairing of that from a board perspective in terms of a resolution that supports that same spirit. 14.04 is the board advocating on behalf of students and families requesting for a testing waiver on behalf of families. This similar waiver that was submitted and approved in April of 2020 clearly states that it was not feasible to move forward with statewide assessments while students were unable to physically attend school due to the necessary COVID-related closures. The same conditions exist, and therefore it is the recommendation of this board to advocate on behalf of students and families in our school system. No, 14.05, no policies requiring a second read. Point 06, no new regulations, no HIP reports. We are seeking approval of 14.01 through point 04.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments from board members?
Real quick, around 14:04, I know that this was, was put out before New Jersey had officially submitted a waiver request, which, which they did. And it's being reported within the last hour that the Department of Education has denied those requests and is saying that state testing has to happen, but from what little I could read now is that results will not count and there's going to be flexibilities, whatever that ends up meaning. But I don't know if we need to look at adjusting 1404 or the language of that, given the change, the changes that have happened, or just wanted to point out that there's been pretty significant changes since before this was discussed last week.
I'd like to find some way to keep the spirit of what Dr. McDowell just said in terms of advocating for what we think is, is best practice, whether, so I don't know if it would work to leave, leave it as is, because it's still, I guess, the spirit of the reasoning behind what we're, we're advocating for, which is this isn't, these aren't the ideal conditions for testing, so why, why would we do it? Why would we use, as we talked about in our committee meetings, why would we use the time and resources for this when? So I don't know, I guess we can talk about that, but do we leave it as is and send it to the governor so that the governor can take those, those resolutions that have been sent and kind of use it to say to the US Department of Education, hey, you know, what, what's the point for this? Or, yeah. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I see no reason not to send it in. If we delay it too much longer, it won't make any difference because.
Right, that was what I was thinking.
I agree, Reagan.
I think it is past that point because the decision has been made, but.
Still let our voice be heard.
Right. It's kind of what Dr. McDowell had said before when we were talking about it, was that it's, it's kind of stating to our community, this is, this is kind of where we stand and what we think is important.
I'm curious, seeing this, this last section of the resolution, saying that we'll send this to each district in the county as soon as possible after approving it. Have we received any similar such resolutions from, from other districts in the county?
I haven't yet. We got this from New Jersey's school boards last week. Trying to remember, we got it.
So it's pretty tight timeline recently, okay.
Yeah, so I think everybody, and again, we go, our meeting's Monday. I think a lot of school boards, I meet, you know, Tuesdays, Wednesdays. So I would imagine by the end of the week, beginning of next week, there'll be a lot of these flying around, I would imagine.
Just to clarify what Matt Craig said, I think the spirit of this is, not clarify, clarify for myself, I think the spirit of this letter is, we don't think testing's a good idea under these circumstances. Matt, were you looking to say something more, more solid, like we asked you to reverse any current?
No, I was just more pointing out to the, that there had been changes.
Right, so is there wording that you think we could change in here?
I don't, I don't have an opinion at this, at this moment. I feel like I need to better understand what actually came out within the last hour before I'd want to state anything.
Is this something we could, if we've decided it does need some kind of second discussion, we can do another resolution perhaps, Matt, if, once we have a chance to digest all this information on how it currently stands, as of an hour ago?
Let's do another one in March.
Yeah. Send it one in and then based on what's changed, make another.
Find out what else there is that we could do to advocate, yeah.
I think we also need to be prepared that if this doesn't make a difference, like we hope it will, that we are, have enough time to turn around and then communicate with parents about opting out, should they choose to, because I know that in the past there's always been confusion around the opting out process, just as a plan B.
Well, I think, as Matt said, I think we just need to get a lot more information about what is even, what the, what the Department of, what guidance they've given and what that looks like before we do anything else. So we'll, we'll take it one step at a time. This is kind of our, this is what we think would be a best practice in an ideal world that we don't necessarily live in and, and then we'll take the next step after that.
So to clarify, like, this, passing this resolution, there, there's not necessarily any, like, negative effect of, of us passing this now. It's just that we, we need to make sure that we follow up with additional kind of follow-up because the context, the climate has changed recently, very recently, in terms of, of what's going on.
Yes.
Okay.
Matt, am I correct, and maybe you don't know either, I thought I had also read that there won't be requirements for graduation this year.
Like, that's the type of stuff I haven't gotten enough into. I want to make sure I have my facts set. I'm not getting fooled by the internet or make sure I actually read what's up there, so.
Media literacy of you.
I saw that too, and that's from the state of New Jersey, saying that they're, they're not going to require graduation.
Thanks, Bill, that's what I thought.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we are moving on to section 15, which is our second opportunity for public comment. This section is when you still need to keep your comments to five minutes or less, but the, it is open to anything that you would like to, any comments you would like to make to the board. So the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. To make things easy, because I can't see everyone that is on the Zoom call, I need you to put your name into the chat. And ideally, what Jen Rossi did, which was also put her address, because Ms. Coleman's taking the notes, definitely needs addresses as well, so you either need to say it or put it into the chat. So put your name in the chat if you would like to make a comment at this time. And we'll start with Jen.
Thank you, good evening. Jen Rossi, 114 East Palmer Avenue, Collingswood. Lot of great information tonight from the Board of Education, as always, and I really appreciate the advocacy efforts from the members of the board. Wanted to see if there was going to be a plan upcoming for the coronavirus relief, specific areas that Collingswood may be wanting to focus on in our districts, if maybe we can see some reporting on what that is going to look like, maybe we would want to focus on HVAC systems, or if we're going to be focusing on getting more kids in for hybrid. And just on the topic, so that's one. My second item that I would like for us to kind of chew on for a little bit is perhaps the idea with the resolution, which was in 1404 for the testing waiver, perhaps thinking of some summer learning opportunities for our kids. We had some great stuff over the summer available in Google Classroom once a week. A lot of it was some videos, some read alouds, things like that. But to say to parents that, you know, we're going to be removing standardized testing, some caregivers are in favor of standardized testing, but to say, yeah, we're going to be, we're pushing to waive standardized testing however we want to do enrichment over the summer to kind of balance it out. So two items, something to think about possibly for future meetings, don't know if you have any feedback comment at this time. But again, thank you for the advocacy as always.
Thanks, Jen, I have a quick clarifying question for you about the first thing that you said. Are you, are you referring to the, the aid that, like, the additional coronavirus?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, the millions that are available from the state level that is getting sprinkled kind of to all the schools, like, if we have a list of priorities kind of in the works at this point.
We do have a list in the works and Ms. Coleman can probably, probably have more information on that, I would imagine, after tomorrow's budget announcement. And so at the next meeting, yes, is the answer to, to your question.
Yes, we just, we just started, we just started meeting today, Dr. McDowell, myself and, and some of, some of the admins to talk about exactly that. Nothing concrete yet, I think we, once I know what state aid looks like. As you know, they giveth and they taketh, like, at the same time, so we found out we're, we're slated to get money, but then, you know.
And sometimes we have to spend before we can get it.
Yes, and if he knows, like, we're slated to get this money because they accepted it from the Fed, then could they cut somewhere else? You know, could they, so I, I'll know on Thursday, once I see it all, and then we can talk with the finance committee.
Yeah, is there a way for caregivers to give any kind of feedback for things that they think should perhaps be priority for the schools? Is there a way for caregivers to do that?
And let's refer to Dr. McDowell here, I think there will be surveys coming out, yeah.
There will be. We are in the process of scheduling a series of stakeholder meetings. So we want to make sure that we're honoring caregivers at every school. So we will be working alongside each of the building administrative teams in order to help us organize, how do we engage and collect that, that essential data? The, the amount of funding that we are slated to receive, all things being positive, is pretty substantial, and we don't want to dwindle those resources. So we do want to make sure that we are including feedback in our decision-making process. And I do want to solidify what Ms. Coleman's comments were, is that provided that we do not see a significant decrease in state aid, that will be a different conversation that we'll be able to have after Thursday. But we do plan on engaging our caregivers at each school in the, in the near, near future.
Thank you for clarifying, good evening.
Jacob Lehman, who is at 701 Linwood Avenue.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, comment and then sort of two follow-up questions. A comment, just kind of following on the comment that was made earlier in the meeting. I do think it's a fair point, and I follow these meetings regularly, I try to attend every month, that, you know, the most important issue to the constituents that elected this board, in my view, is the fact that, you know, children are not in school, that people are suffering, that families are suffering, that kids are suffering, that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about equity at every meeting, I think that's important. That, you know, there's a lot of discussion about equity at every meeting. I think that's important, but that the, perhaps the biggest exacerbator of inequity is every day that we continue with a situation where children are not in school on a regular basis. I really can't think of anything that's more an exacerbation of inequity in the district. So I just think that, you know, that's a fair point, and I think it would be helpful to the community for there to be a regular agenda item at board meetings where the superintendent or whoever, you know, where the board is going to give some kind of update on what the school's doing vis a vis COVID and plans to do better to get kids back in school. So I think that would be something that everybody in the community would appreciate. So that's kind of a comment. Question, this is for Dr. McDowell. I really appreciate what you said about, you know, you're going to engage stakeholders and you're going to be holding meetings. I think there's going to be a meeting tomorrow where there's going to be some discussion about this issue. In the end, though, you can agree, Dr. McDowell, that the final decision about, you know, the back to school plan, whatever that looks like, that comes down to you and potentially the board approving that policy. Is that, that fair?
I think from a logistics perspective, the final decision is based on a recommendation from myself with the approval of the board. So in, in that sense, yes. In the greater sense, unilateral decisions are not something that we are going to move forward with. And I think that the previous residents' comments about are we going to engage caregivers, I think that that's a critical constituency that we have to include in that process. So to give you kind of like the fifty thousand foot view on what we're looking at at this particular moment in our planning is that we are refining a, a survey instrument where we are going to go back and take inventory of what our community is requesting in terms of the interest in moving to in-person learning. Paired with that, we're going to be looking at each of our facilities and assessing what's the ultimate capacity that we can bring individuals back and, and then still be able to maintain the CDC guidelines as it relates to cleaning protocols and social distancing. And then be able to determine what's the actual capacity at each school and then figure out what that looks like in terms of the maximum number of students that we can bring back and in what phases we can actually do so. We're talking about significant logistics and moving parts. And in order for us to be able to do that, there has to be ongoing two-way dialogue with our caregivers, our stakeholders, our educators, and our building leaders in order to make sure that we get it right. So I will share again, we fully believe and, and agree with you and some of the other residents that have spoken tonight, that the safest place for children to be is in schools. The most appropriate place for children to be is in class. But we want to make sure that we get it right, and we want to make sure that we take all of those factors into consideration so that we have a plan that does it as safely but and as quickly as possible. So to your point, yes, the, the deciding body or governing body is the Board of Education, per recommendation from the superintendent. But I can't get to a recommendation without significant input from our community.
Okay. I just have one more quick follow up question I'll ask you, and this relates to your letter of February nineteenth, your superintendent's report, again, on this COVID topic. And you mentioned a little bit earlier, you were talking about, you know, that you're subject to guidelines and, you know, policies at this. You made, you made reference to CDC guidelines just a moment ago. Your letter talks about this COVID activity level index, the New Jersey system that they're using. That's a guideline. Collins, so it's not bound to follow that. Fair?
Well, that's, that's, that's a loose interpretation. So yes.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is, and this is my concern with that, I'm rather than not trying to hide the ball, you know, if you look at that index, you know, you say, well, it's yellow now, and that public health officials are recommending against full in-person instruction. Okay. To get to green, which would be the level below that, if you look at their metrics, you would have to have less than one COVID nineteen case per hundred thousand residents to be at green on that index. To me, that's impossible. We could have everybody in Collinswood vaccinated, and there were, or everybody in Camden County vaccinated, and you might still be at that level. So I just want to have an understanding, a baseline understanding that, you know, these metrics are not controlling what we can and cannot do, and Collins wouldn't, you know, we ought not be beholden to that. Fair?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Wa, nine ten Stokes Avenue.
Thanks, everybody. Just a couple of comments first. Congratulations, Reagan. I think you're going to make a great president. I love the move. And to Fiona, I think just to share responsibility and the capacity building on the board, it speaks true to your volume of the leadership as well. Dr. McDowell, once again, welcome. I spoke briefly at the last meeting. Just had a comment. And I think some of it was discussed tonight with some of the inequities and through COVID and also through the PTA and playgrounds. And I think the more that you get into the job and the more that you talk to people and see, you know, I, and it's, it's more of an issue, I think, than is on the surface. And I think that, you know, just focusing in and looking at the inequities across elementary schools, looking at the inequities in the high school. Preferably, you know, mostly with, with our students of color. I think that after your ninety day sort of wrap up, I'd like to see what your plans are specifically about addressing these issues. And, you know, I think I'm really looking forward to your time. I followed your, you know, where you've been in the past, and I think you've done some great things. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that Dr. McDowell does plan to share the results of his, his transition journey with, with everyone once, once we get there. So thank you, Jen. I apologize if I'm going to mispronounce your last name, Ed Bytes, six seventeen Lee's Avenue.
You, you got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, right. Just nailed it. The question I have, just a follow up on Mr. Mr. Lehman is the idea that there's going to be a survey put together to see what the parents in town want. Is there a, an even like a rough timetable for what we're looking at in terms of when caregivers and parents in the community can expect to hear, expect to hear when we're going to know a little bit more about going back more days a week, you know, ideally, as, you know, five days a week full time, just whether, whether that happens this year or just in the fall, like when we can start to expect to hear a plan. And then the, the second question I have, and it's just quick, is like, is, is there any consideration been given to the idea that we're not going to have kids that haven't taken standardized tests for two, if Collins, I guess it sounds like if the board had its way, we wouldn't be doing them, even if the state says they're not going to count. Is there any concern for kids falling, I mean, part of standardized testing, the exercise of it is learning how to take standardized tests, because, well, people might debate philosophically whether they're good or not. They're here to stay, I think, and people are going to be taking them the rest of their life. So I guess just those two points, when can we expect to hear more definitive information, like what, is there a timetable and any thought given to the fact that we're going to have kids who have no idea how to take a standardized test?
Thank you for your question. In terms of timeline, what we're, what we're seeking to do first is, within our initial assessment, within the next week, we are seeking to put out the, the survey. We're going to have a window for families to be able to provide that necessary input. And then short, shortly after that, we will be releasing the input that a summary of the feedback that we received. Parallel to that particular process, we will be doing our assessments of each of our facilities so that we can get to a number. I can't give you a definitive timeline when we will have an official plan, because there's, there's some factors that need to be taken into consideration. But what I will say is that phase one of our planning will be, has already started. But it's all pending the information that we receive and then our ability to pivot and, and plan appropriately based on that information. So I would expect, I would set the expectation for the community to be on the lookout for the survey for next week. We will probably extend the period of the survey for the full week to make sure that we are able to get as much data and feedback as possible. And then within short proximity of that, we will start providing regular updates about where we are within the process, opportunities for stakeholder engagement, and then decisions as they're made. We will also make those publicly available as we get closer and closer to a formalized transition plan for, for full in-person instruction. In terms of your second question, as it relates to standardized testing, our students who are actively engaged in the learning process are still being tested by their teachers. And most of the testing that's taking place in schools often mimics what students will see in terms of test and assessment structure similar to the statewide assessment. But I, I do agree that one of the things, when we get students back on a more permanent basis of in-person instruction, we will need to reorient students to the rigor and the demands of a more structured testing environment. So we do, we do agree with that. I think the spirit behind the board, as well as a school leadership advocating on behalf of students is that in the midst of the circumstances that many of our children are facing, to put undue pressure and, and increase anxiety around a high stakes test, even a test that the state says they're not counting would be ill advised. And that's the reason for the position of this board and this leadership team.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. You summarized that very nicely. And then finally, last but certainly not least, because he was kind enough to, to wait until the end. Matt Dwyer.
Sure, thanks. Dr. McDowell, with all due respect, I mean, how, how could you test students that haven't been learning at the, at the proper rate? So I, just to comment on that one, I mean, I mean, that would, that would be crazy. That would be insane. But my first comment is to the board. It's just, I've never attended a board meeting. I've never read any of the, I, I'm completely ignorant to what has been covered in previous agendas, and maybe it has been, but it's shocking that the reopening of full-time in-person instruction is not, is not, was not on the agenda. Maybe you're meeting with it in, in other committees or or whatever, but that's just shocking. As a parent who has a couple of kids that are supposed to enter the school system, it's, that's, that's, that's surprising. But again, maybe I don't know. Maybe there's other meetings taking place, but, but it seems like the spirit is of the board and of, from hearing Dr. McDowell, who again, has made a great first impression, and I've, I've loved listening to him and reading his, 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 the content that he's put out so far, but the spirit seems like there's this abdication of responsibility around opening in full and wanting to rely on folks from the county or guidelines from the state or all these other entities, when as board members, you know, your responsibility is to our kids and to make the best decision that's in the best interest of our kids. And sometimes that's not the same as the county as a whole or the state as a whole. You know, we have very special interest in our kids. So that should just, should drive the decision-making process. And along those lines, I mean, in, in your code of ethics, the, the state code of ethics, it says as board members, you will not surrender your independent judgment. You will not surrender your independent judgment to other outside partisan organizations. So that judgment has to be specific to our kids. And there's a lot of noise about other stuff that's outside of our town, but we really have the responsibility to, to our kids. And I agree with the earlier comment. I mean, virtual learning is the breeding ground for perpetuating inequities. I mean, there has been study after study after study that says the middle to lower income families are being hurt worse by this. Absolute worst. I mean, they are the ones, the lower income families, the middle to lower income families, those are the ones that are bearing the burden of all of this by not being in school full time. Someone made the comments, comment earlier about haves and have nots. Well, guess what? The haves, they're probably managing. They're probably surviving. Some of them are probably thriving in this environment. The have nots, they're struggling. And we know this, we've personally seen it. I'm not going to cite all the studies, but you can read plenty of articles if you want to, if you want to Google it. And I'd say, last comment to, to Dr. McDowell, you know, you have a lot of, I called it noise earlier, exterior factors and people and county representatives and state representatives, but you were hired to lead. We need a leader. Our kids right now need a champion. They need someone who's going to be a champion for them, not for the county, not for anyone else. Your number one priority should be the social and emotional well-being of our students. That's your role. Collaborate, great. Get other opinions, great. But we shouldn't be deciding on opening our schools. That's what our schools are there for. They're, they're there for, for, for teaching, and that shouldn't be the question. The question is, how are we going to do it? Let's get busy planning on doing it. Because people are leaving, you know, people are going to go to private school, or they're going to, they're going to try to do whatever they can do to manage, but keep that in mind, our lower income families are being hurt worse by this, and, and we can't let this happen on our watch. It's all of our responsibility. So team up with the parents, team up with this board. Let's all make it happen. Let's all make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Mr. Dwyer, I just want to leave one last comment. I, I appreciate your comments. And I just wanted to make sure that I'm clarifying the spirits and the desires of the board. We agree with you. So in terms of our planning, our planning is not should we go back to full, to in-person instruction. It's how we go back, when we go back, and what are the factors that leads to a successful going back to in-person instruction. So I just wanted to, to reiterate the fact that we're not having conversations about staying in remote and in ad nauseam. The conversations have now shifted. What does it look like? What are the resources and the factors that we need in order for it to be successful? How do we engage our community at each level to make sure that individuals within our community are involved in the process and supportive of the process? And then ultimately, what's that timeline look like? That's the nature of our discussions right now. Just need a little bit more time.
Well, it is happening. I mean, it's worth noting that there's tens of thousands of private schools that are doing it. I work at a school in administration. We don't have a meeting without talking about this planning. It's that critical. So like I said, maybe you all are meeting behind closed scenes, and that's great. Times of the essence.
Thank you, sir.
Jay Wa.
Yeah, sorry, I had to jump back in. I just had another comment about the reopening and, and like the last resident who spoke, I'm also an administrator in Philadelphia for six different schools, and you know, these conversations do occur every day. But I think one thing that you're, you're doing the right thing here, Dr. Dwyer and the board, by taking the time and making an informed decision. You can't rush this decision. And I understand every day that they're out of school, every day that they're sitting there on a computer is, is not good for them. You know, but the safety of our staff and the safety of our students has to come first. So make that informed decision. Use the guidelines. That's what they're there for. It's to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for, forgive it, for sharing your, your thoughts with us tonight. And I don't see anyone else's name in the chat at the moment. So that being the case, we are looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening. Do I have a second? All in favor?
I.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.